Does that help?
Yeah.
Get down.
Brother is had, was watching the burning.
Oh, really? Yeah, that's good.
I don't know, I heard it too.
So long.
Hey, Bill.
That's not worth seeing. Exactly. I was mentioning. We're the ones that we get so many.
No, it's Anthony. Well, no, it's good. It used to be, it was a separate again.
You'd go with the agent or just listed yourself?
Good evening and welcome to tonight's board session. We have one item for the board session, that is the discussion with the tourism board. Sorry, you want to come forward? Now, you can bring up other members as you want.
Well, what I thought.
But, the, the, I wanted to bring this item up because there's always been some questions about the tourism and so it probably would be a good idea to have some dialogue tonight with tourism. I guess one of the things, and you might correct me if I'm just, I would like to know with council to know, you know, the purpose of the tourism board and how you're following that purpose. You know, maybe your, some of your processes and any changes that you might have going forward. So, why don't you go ahead and introduce them and start from there.
Well, I don't know, can you hear me?
That thing lifts.
It lifts?
No, on the.
I left, I left the podium lifts.
Underneath the right side of it, you'll find a switch that will lift the whole podium.
Oh. That's pretty cool. Okay, good questions, okay. Well, I didn't know the exact question, but I'll work right all through those questions. What we thought we would do is kind of say, well, first of all, hi, everybody. Thank you, and thank you for all that everybody does here. Some of the things that we've done for the last year and then how we did the processes for the local grant round that we just did and, and then some of our, um, our purposes. And as many of you may know, the mayor has just become a liaison with the tourism board in the last few months. So, um, the board members, myself, Tom Cress, Camilla Campbell, and Nancy Lucky and Joey Salazar. Um, so I'm going to go over that and then Tom's gonna go over the grants that we just did. So our current focus is outdoor recreation, amenities that Trinidad has, which is, um, you know, all the water that we have in our area because we like to associate our area for outdoor recreation with water right now. Um, so the river, um, both Trinidad Lake, Monument Lake, um, and then the outdoor, the.
Trail.
The trails and the golf, um, course and outdoor amenities is what we're really focusing on. Um, accomplishments, uh, we've done, we did the trolley design that will be on the trolley when it starts here in just a week. But visit trinidadcolorado.com and that new website that we did and we had that set up through Sixtus. That set it up recently, we've just taken on a contract with, uh, where is she? But, uh, we, that contract was running about twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And we had decided that that wasn't really working well for us and we weren't keeping the money locally. So we now have a girl, Christine, that's with Trinidad State Junior College, but is also doing the art of aid site that is doing the local site for us and she's really done a great job in the few months that we've had her. We've updated our visitor guide, we've started to work on the future guide, which will happen in the fall. It's going to be a different size guide than the current guide that was recommended to us a few years that we've updated. Um, it's going to be more of a guide that will set in the outdoor stands. Um, we have the formation of the new tourism site and, uh, that girl is Christie Rogers and she also works with the STEM program at the college. Um, we support also the state of Colorado, the travel guide, Colorado Life Magazine, and we're in the Outdoor Adventure Magazine Trinidad is for this year. We currently have about a hundred and sixty members a month that are sent, that Marty in the Welcome Center sends out people that want hard literature on Trinidad, which is really huge because a lot of people don't like hard literature anymore. So usually that's an older site that wants the hard literature, so we're hoping that we get a lot of those snowbirds that pass through that are the ones that are really looking for those sites. We did the Craft 101 Initiative for the city of Trinidad, which involved all the boards this year, which also unfolded of a ten thousand dollar grant that the city was gotten so they could use for, um, a, uh, what'd you call that, um, some sort of a survey in the area and that was used towards the RPM contract. Um, where, um, and so with that happened with that, they actually came in town six different separate times, met with all the boards, came up with a plan that we should follow for our funding for this year and that's the exact plan that we're working on is the plan that was developed through the state of Colorado Tourism, Craft 101 Initiative, and Andrew was the final person that worked on that before he left in August for this year's funding, so we've been going off that plan. Um, we're working with the city partnerships, obviously Main Street and different social boards. Um, we're doing, not only online with Facebook, but we're also working, looking at a hashtag for Trinidad. There's been a lot of hashtags on Instagram, we have one solely for Trinidad, so we're working on that. We work with KRDO with a big plan in Trinidad and some of those ads, we let other, um, other festivals and people that want to use those ads, we've been passing some of those ads out for, with KCRT. We're also working with KRDO, KRTN, and of course the Chronicle and Orfino World and the Legends Magazine based on, if that's directly with us or because we funded places that are using that money to be part of that. Obviously the Blues Fest, the museums, the history museum, Triggers Fourth of July, um, the Loudon Gravel Grinder, the Southwest Chief Comedy Festival, we have so much money earmarked to start new festivals every year and we did award ten thousand dollars for that comedy festival to happen this year. Um, we're, we're, our plans are to discontinue some highway signs that we have on Highway sixty-seven because it hasn't been working with us and try to spend that money somewhere else that's on our plan. And then we're redoing the sign that's from here to Walmart, that sign that says, "Welcome to Trinidad and Exeter", that we're redoing that sign outside there. Last summer, we had over two thousand eight hundred people ride the trolley in the summertime, so we're excited about that. We're working right now with new videos that we can put on the trolley to be a better display of what Trinidad will be. And so we're going to have shorter videos about that, so in case, um, Blues Fest is happening one weekend or Farmer's Market is happening, or we have a new something that's happening in, uh, in the fall, we could actually change out those CDs in the trolley while we're giving tours. Um, Kathy, oh, and then we also attained into the Welcome Center this year, which has had its own strides of pains and growing as we've overseen what's going on and working with Marty to make these, um, work out. And so it, that's also been a, a big weight for us, but we're working through all those regular ones. Kathy Ritter and the future of the Welcome Center, so Kathy Ritter is the state director for, um, all the Welcome Centers. She's the state director for tourism in the state. And right now, it doesn't look like we're going to be funded next year. We haven't been funded in the tourism a- at the Welcome Center for a while. The reason, her current is, although it's not final yet, it's pretty close to final, it's ninety-nine percent there. The reason, I'm just writing a few more letters as I wrote her and then she copied with Greg on a few notes that, um, I wrote and welcomed me for being a cheerleader to Trinidad, but said that this, uh, our Trinidad location was the least visited Welcome Center in the state of Colorado. And, and, and Greg pointed out that that was because the exit was no longer there and that, you know, we should still get funding and she made a comment saying that she hears that it might be moved to the La Porta complex and since that has an on and off ramp basically, um, that it would be looked at to be funded if it would be moved, but where it currently sits, they, and it's, it has such little visitors for that reason, it will not be funded. So that's something that we're all going to have to handle because it's a sixty thousand dollar tax to the tourism board by running that. Um, we went to the, we did the SOCO conference and the mayor and I did the tours and, uh, on one of the buses. So, uh, it was a really outstanding event, people rode, I think people, Marty had told her how well she managed that. We had a taste of Trinidad that night, um, it was so wild. I think it was really a signature thing that we did that and we had fun giving the tour too. So we did, um, we did all the, that we could on one tour and twice and then somebody else did two other tours. Um, the future focus is one of the things I'm really working on, that I'm really trying to have implemented by November and I'm doing this through the state of Colorado Tourism Site, you know, I'm one of the top twenty and so I get to go and, and spend time at, at the state level. And, um, and it's really passionate for me to start a youth tourism board. And so I really want that to be a big thing for Trinidad, I want kids to be able to do resumes, they can use it, um, future for college applications or whatever, but we'll actually have a board for the city of Trinidad, to see, for a youth tourism board that can give us ideas from their viewpoint, what our ci- city needs and really work with the kids more because we need to be more kid-friendly in this town and I'd really love to get, uh, the, uh, the youth of Trinidad saying what they think would be better and for them to know what the tourism board is to do and what we're advertising at our level. And I'd al- also like to, I went to, one of the, one of the, uh, things I did with the state tourism is I went to Grand Junction, uh, about six weeks ago. And Grand Junction said they really built their downtown area into what it is right now because about ten years ago, they started working with their local col- college and they really started having places pocketed in their downtown area so college students could go by wifi or other things that college kids like. And I was sitting in that classroom and I was saying, you know, I never see college kids walking downtown our area. We have all these kids downtown, all these kids going to college and whoever sees somebody walking around with a laptop going in and out, nobody sees them. So with the new, um, the new president of the college that's coming in, I'm going to really try to work with her to see if there's something we can do, a wifi area, if we can make the businesses youth-friendly that have it, like the LA Grill's got good wifi and other places got good wifi, so that we can bring some of those college kids and give that energy downtown because we really, really need it. So that's the update and now we're going to go over the grant process.
Um, we had thirteen grant applications and the total amount of all the thirteen half grant applications came to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. We had twenty thousand dollars for new events and fifty thousand for existing events.
And, yeah, just like you added that, that's, that was a year-long thing and we had decided we were going to do the grant thing in four increments, so that total amount of seventy would be divided by four.
By four, yes. So, that was a challenging process because there had never been thirteen grant applications in the entire time of the tourism board's existence. Um, one of the main focuses that we wanted to do was we wanted to make sure that there was transparency with everyone, everybody was on an equal scale, that we had all the information that the grant form had. Through this process, we've, we hit a few bumps and we've had, we're in the process of doing a new grant form for that reason. When, when I came on the board, we didn't have much of a process. It was kind of a.
Well, there was a process, the hard part about it was that we never received a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of grants when you felt like you were going to spend about twenty thousand dollars a quarter. And so we ended up having to finally go to rules and regulations where before if it was SERT or the Blues Fest, if it's somebody that came forward or Santa Fe Trail Festival, there was nothing else on the table and they were the ones that were eager. So sometimes we awarded grants that we didn't go through all the guidelines because we're a small town and because nobody else wanted anything except for a few entities. So now it became really difficult.
So, in this process, we, we, we had to really look at a lot of things in grants. Some of the grants, to me, were, you know, they were, they were asking for money for not, were in the guidelines of the process. And that was, you know, that was some of the things that I was having problems with was, was that, and, and.
For example?
We had one that, uh, he would budget it, uh, twenty-one forty for the project. He asked us for twenty-one forty and it was to put cards, business, or cards into the motels to get people out of the motels to come downtown for, uh, an art track, which that's not what the tourism is, is based on, it's for outside of a radius of, of advertising. So, I just, I had, you know, that's where, where I had problems with, was on that one. And a lot of them, I don't think, really understand the grant process. That's, that's another thing because you have this gentleman, he asked for this amount of money, but he was a local event. So, that's, that's what I had with that one.
Did I, did I understand you to say it was outside the radius of advertising?
Right.
Well, I think with, with what was, the other part that was hard about that one because obviously I really, I really liked that cause and that person too, but the reason was really hard is he didn't have his fit, his paperwork filled out.
Right, and not all the paperwork was there. Um, then we had, we had several left, we had six left, all their paperwork wasn't there, so.
So out of the thirteen, how many were funded, seven?
Seven.
So we funded seven out of thirteen.
Can you tell me?
Yeah.
So we, you know, telling who you funded and what the amounts were.
Sure. Um, so start easy, we, uh, so, um, the Southwest Chief was a different line item. It was a new thing and we funded ten thousand dollars.
Actually out of the twenty, right?
Correct.
Yeah, they came out of the twenties, so that was divvied up differently. The Blues Fest did receive, um, two thousand eighty-three dollars a month for a year. So in this round, uh, which is twenty-five thousand dollars and, and we required them also, which I really like this idea and I hope we do it succ- uh, work successfully, is to buy a really nice guitar and have all, all have all the, um, all the artists and singers sign the guitar and sell tickets for ten or twenty dollars through the, or, or, through a five oh one C three and the money, hopefully if you just sold a hundred or two hundred tickets and you could make like ten thousand dollars, that money would be given back to the tourism board so that we could help fund other events by selling of that guitar. I just think it's a, you know, we're going to try to figure out how we can partner with some of these events to make some more money so we can fund other events. And so I think the guitar idea, which was Joey's, a great idea.
Okay, and that Blues Fest is, I understand from previous conversation with you, was to fund advertising.
Yeah, advertising and marketing outside, uh, outside fifty miles and it's only for that.
Whereas compared to the first one, the proposed advertising, it was, I don't understand the distinction.
Well, there's a couple of distinctions, the first thing is, and, the first thing is that, um, the Blues Fest, I think their budget was.
A hundred and ninety thousand.
A hundred and ninety thousand dollars and, uh, and, and so they asked for thirty and they got two thousand eighty-three a month for twelve months. And the difference is the other one is it's two thousand one hundred and forty dollars. He didn't have his paperwork filled out right and there was no partners with it at all. So we'd also like to see some partners, um, and, and there was no paperwork filled out.
So I understand it was more a question of procedure than was the concept of advertising.
Yeah, it wa- correct, it was, it was procedure more, because even if you were to said that. So what, at the board at the end of it doing, and I know we're going to talk about the Santa Fe Trail Days, which is close to my heart, I, in this talk here too, but the board finally got to the point because of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of, um, of grant, is they actually said, um, I know you want to be a nice site and I know this is what everybody wants to do, but we, we can't award some people who don't have their, for paperwork right and then deny people who turned in all their paperwork right. So it wasn't about any specific, um, entity at that point. We finally just ended up dividing out the paperwork and said who had all their forms and who didn't.
One of, one of the things about the tourism board money, it's, it's heads and beds. It's heads and beds. How many people can we bring to our community from outside this area? To stay in our community for, uh, the day, the weekend, whatever. That's, that's where the money is derived, from the money's derived from all this mot- of motels.
Do you have, do you have one of our score sheets?
Well.
Uh, finish your list.
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry. That's, no, it's okay. Um, uh, is this the final? This isn't the final, so.
You guys left off on the Blues Fest.
Pardon?
You left off on the Blues Fest.
The Blues Fest, um, so then we did Triggers Baseball, we did two thousand dollars.
Which they had a budget of sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, is that two thousand per month?
No, just that was a total grant fund.
The total grant, and the difference with the Blues Fest is that they put ads in periodicals year-round all over. It, I mean, they have periodically, in December and January, they're advertising in New York for the following years. Um, the following years. The following years festival. Um, so Triggers, uh, Triggers Baseball, we did two thousand dollars and their, and their, um, budget was sixty-five thousand dollars. So, um, and all the marketing materials and what, um, they put down for over fifty miles was right on. I mean, I almost thought, wow, they couldn't have even asked for more because they really did do a lot. Um, Main Street for the Fourth of July, um, their budget was twelve thousand dollars, um, to put it off and we allowed them forty-three hundred dollars plus, we gave them some of our ads from KCRT, which was probably a total package of around five thousand dollars. Um, Branson, Branson High Low Grinder, um, that's Loudon's, um, they were raising fifteen hundred dollars and last year was her first year that she already, already did it, so it could have been considered her first year event. Um, but they really had a great package together for only seven hundred dollars, so we awarded the seven hundred dollars.
And you said that was for Branson?
Yeah, they did the High Low Grinder and Christine Loudon did it last year.
The way she explained it in the grant form is there's no place to stay in Branson.
So they all.
But they do have people coming in the bikes, with bikes. So when they're done with the bike rides, they actually do use our facilities in town, they, they stay out on the lookout.
What's a High Low Grinder?
They don't, they go on the backside of Fisher's Peak and last year, it's like, like, don't quote me, but it's like a fifty-mile race, it's not like an easy race.
But it's pedal bikes.
But it's pedal bikes and they did stay at the hotel and because I get to run a hotel, I get to see what really is out there and so she never came to us last year and I found out about it literally because they were staying at the hotel. There was like a dozen of them that stayed at the hotel that she got to come here because. So is that, that's, I'm sorry, is that considered a, a new?
No, because she already did it last year.
She had done it last.
So that went, that came out of the fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, the AR Mitchell?
VR Mitchell, we didn't, we didn't fund the AR Mitchell because of the paperwork was, was, was one that we.
It seemed to be the problem with this paperwork, I hear, and not being completely driven, it's not done right or what?
Here's one of the things that, since I had come on the board, is, is we've lost four city staff members in the time that I had been on the board and we changed to ci- two city council members.
And we took on the Welcome Center.
And we took on the Welcome Center and we, we're looking at magazines that aren't advertising Trinidad and that's part of the things that I took on, I hate to get off the subject, but we're advertising the Twin Peaks. So, we, we are trying to get away from the magazines, which we got away from, a package of USA Today has magazines and their, and their, um, newspapers. My thing is, is I would like to go in a different direction and before Andrew left, he did a whole rollout of.
With the Colorado Tourism.
With the Colorado Tourism, Tourism Office, as to where to spend your money, where you're getting your best bang for your buck. And I have that here if anybody would like to see it and it, it's a total breakdown of, uh, social media, radio advertising, um, just all the different aspects of, of advertising. And we've taken, we've cut back now on billboards. Some of the billboards we have, they're in areas where there's no traffic, there's no lights on the billboards. We have one that we're going to keep. So, since, since there's new members on the board, it's, we're looking at things in a whole different way as to the way they were done before. We want to advertise Trinidad. I sat down with Marty today and we picked out a bunch of pictures that are Trinidad, uh, such as our golf course. Um, I want to, I want to see things that the city owns, I want to see Monument Lake advertised, I want to see the golf course advertised, I want to see our parks, our, everything that we have to offer here in Trinidad. That's, that's, that's the road I would like to go down. I don't want to advertise the Twin Peaks or anything in Cuchara, La Vida. I want to advertise things that are here for people to.
You know, go ahead and explain the process, like Joe's asking for the paperwork and why some of these were not funded.
Well, what.
For the paperwork, so that's the question that we had a few.
That process, I don't know how those things, those things should have not come to the board until, for a vote, until all of those particulars, all of the financials or whatever, whatever the grant form asked for, should have probably been done before it came to the board as a vote. So I don't know if that should have been city staff or where that, where that should have been.
Tom, so we.
Show them a grant application.
Yeah.
Yeah, how many pages are in that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll show, we'll show you in just a second.
We're going to show you a grant application.
Well.
Like four pages maybe?
Well, first of all, let me just.
She, she could just keep on going with that and I'll get the grant review.
Yeah, yeah. The Chamber, uh, had home tours, but, um, we didn't have all the paperwork to it and, um, there wasn't anything in reference, not the Chamber, the, uh, the Chamber, Assistant Chamber.
And Basters.
And Basters. Um, they just had an idea on paper and they didn't have any budget with it and we think the historic home tours is a really great idea, but, um, for instance, uh, when Wally came to us with the Southwest Chief or anybody has come to us, they said, "This is our di- i- idea and in May, when it's not busy, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, these are the places we're going to advertise. This is the work that we will do, this is the partnerships that we will have and this is our budget for it." So they came with us with an idea for historic home tours, which we all think is a good idea, but it had no substance to it at all, it didn't say that, um, we, so we're, we're going to work with them so that we can get, uh, a, have that happen, you know, but, um, the Trinidad History Museum and, uh, Kirby and all the, um, music she does all summer, we did, uh, she needed four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and I don't have that exact amount, but it was around two thousand dollars that we gave her. And she also had partnerships and did some other stuff.
And part of that was some radio ads from KCRT.
And then, yeah, yeah, we did, we also gave her radio ads and some other stuff. Then there was the Terror Fest and the music and lyrics that came through.
What was that again, Terror?
Terror, 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 ah, Terrorist for October, which we thought was a lovely idea. Um, not at first, but after they gave us their spear, we're like, okay, we could get this and apparently they were done all over the nation and they have like, you know, the funeral homes and, and SERT and stuff, they all do whatever scary shows and scary contests and, and I'm not a very good talker about scariness, but they sure were and I thought it was a good idea, but neither one of their paperwork was filled out, um, completely. So we didn't do it, but we really, we really loved that idea. Um, and, um, the Farmer's Market, we gave some money to.
We, we gave them, uh, five hundred dollars and that's part of some KCRT ads.
And then gave them some ads, yeah. And, uh, I think that's it.
So, just, you said you gave out seven, I had the Triggers, the Blues Fest, Main Street, Fourth of July, the Branson High Low Grinder, the History Museum and Farmer's Market?
You didn't do the History Museum with us?
No, we did.
Yes, we did.
We did, yeah, we did with Kirby, yeah. She had a great, she had a great program for what she was doing and getting music into the hotels and people coming down and she had a track record from last year, the amount of people that went to those.
Just to make sure I'm clear, I have six and you have, you said you had seven recipients?
Well, Southwest Chief one.
Southwest Chief.
Yeah.
So you have ten thousand left out of new events.
Right.
Yes, exactly, and we're really looking for a new event and I, I really can't say that enough between the Chamber Home Tours, the Terror Fest, the Music and Lyrics, I don't know which way to go, but I really like all those ideas, we just need a plan, we just can't have money over without a plan.
You know, to make a long story short, since I've been on as the liaison, one thing that they're looking for is a completed application in order for the, before it comes to the tourism board so that by the time it reaches them, they should have every piece of paper documented so that they can make a decision.
Is this the first year that there were that application requiring financials and what?
No.
No.
So then why was there a problem between doing this one and the previous years when apparently they were accepted?
Well, the, yeah, it was our fault, the previous years when we would do it, only one person would come forward and would say, "Well, you're the only person, you didn't do it, we still need this" and we'd do this little cat and mouse game and they would finally give it to us and we would fund it because they were the only ones. Now you're sitting down to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of grants with so many not having them done, so that's really what the problem was.
I understand that process, why, earlier on you began by saying that there were thirteen applications which was a significant increase over what has been traditionally the. To what do, to what do you attribute that increase in application?
So much, I mean, look at the town, I mean, you know, Fisher's Peak acquisition, people are excited, people are coming up with events, people, you know, and we want to and we remind people that the reason why this money even exists is because, um, people stay in hotel rooms, right? Because that's how we make money, because if nobody stayed in any hotels, we'd have no money. So we, we're looking for events that run overnight stays.
So I'm trying to figure out.
For the moment.
Yeah. I'm trying to figure out where you guys came up with the fifty-mile radius. Was that in the?
It's in the grant.
It's in the grant program.
But is, is it in ordinance for the tourism?
Yes, it is.
Is it?
I, I.
You cannot, you cannot advertise within fifty miles of the city?
Well, you can, it has to be so that you're. Well, you you can, it has to be so that your advertising and promotional dollars go beyond fifty miles, so like.
Beyond a fifty mile radius.
There there's small amounts of windows that are asking for it. It would be difficult, I think, to advertise beyond fifty miles, how do you do that?
Yeah, actually, so.
I I it was difficult to listen to and I didn't hear a lot of what was said, but I watched the meeting, the special meeting on the sixth. And I listened to, um, the dialogue as fast as I could, which was occurring, um. The mics need to be turned up and we speak close to true them or something, but anyway, a comment was made with regard to. The Chamber Commerce or the Santa Fe Trail Days and and a comment was, well, they should be advertising more. And I I I thought, how could they be advertising more? They don't have a twenty, uh, two thousand dollar a month budget for advertising. I mean, it's easy, it it's easy. For the Blues Fest to advertise as they do because they've got a pretty fat budget for doing so.
Right, right.
And and this was one time shot from the Chamber.
I I totally agree with you and if you watch the tape, you'll hear me say on the tape, um, you know, this, the reason why it just, you know, we had concerned members that they're that. The figure they did get, they were losing money every year and people.
I heard whoever occupies this, you'd say that.
And I said, but they're bringing it back downtown, so when you bring it back downtown, it's still gonna be economic help. So, um, I think, you know, I think the best I can say about this and the mayor has brought through with the Santa Fe Trail Festival. Is concerned is that, you know, maybe after they advertise on the time, it could be a one-time present that we would re- we replenish some funds for them. But we know that the Santa Fe Trail Festival is important to the City of Trinidad, it surely is important to the Tourism Board. I think it it got into a, uh, it got into a a position that the paperwork wasn't done and the board had decided in one swoop that what wasn't. We we called the second meeting, I called the second meeting just for us to go through it and that meeting didn't take very long because they still, after they really thought about it, they thought, hey. We have to, we have to stick together and we decided anybody's paperwork that wasn't filled out, we weren't gonna fund, so we stuck together as a board and said, we'll go forward from there, but.
Can I add something?
Uh huh.
The the Chamber Commerce had zero radius on their advertising outside of fifty mile, they put zero on. And they were asking for ten thousand dollars, so.
Where did that come from, I thought it was two.
No, it doesn't, it was ten thousand dollars on their advertising. So that's what what position they were against, they had zero radius to advertise outside of town and they were asking for ten thousand dollars.
The Triggers.
When you guys talked on the phone, sorry specifically about.
Well, I said.
You told me two.
No, I said, I I. We even thought about two thousand dollars outside the fifty mile radius and if you watch the tape, I think I suggested fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars outside there. But then they didn't have anything in their advertising and marketing program at all for anything outside the city of Trinidad.
Kind of, yeah, we were kinda lost on that one.
The one thing I mentioned, the last, uh, meeting that we had, uh, is that even though the Blues Fest, like they, like you were saying, is, you know, been losing money.
No, the Santa Fe Trail Festival.
Oh, the Santa Fe, the Santa Fe Trail is been losing some dollars.
The papers they turned into us showed a loss every year.
Every year.
Every year.
The thing that I mentioned that was a concern to me is that I think that I know that the Santa Fe Trail is concerning and it's important to the city of Trinidad. And these are people that don't, some of these people that more a lot of these people that go to the Santa Fe Trail. May not go to like the Blues Fest or some of these other venues that cost more dollars. So we need to keep a focus and still allow the have events for the locals that doesn't cost them a lot of money.
Well, I think we need to.
Also allow them to have something.
Yeah, and one of the things that we've done to stop this from happening again is to not only advertise how much we have to spend. Um, so that people know that if you're applying for grants, this grant runs only five thousand dollars or whatever that amount is. And then secondly is we're having a a sheet on the front of the applications, just like other grant processes, so they can check off to make sure if they haven't read the whole grant. Clearly is on the front page, do your have your financials, do you have your outside this, do you have, and to actually have a check mark sheet and to let people know how much their money is in there. You know, it it's been difficult.
Yeah, it has, do you have a process for submitting these so that they can be corrected and returned with ample time to do so?
Yes, yeah, and yes, we do.
So that exists?
Yeah.
I I guess the point I'm trying to make is Santa Fe Trail Days losing proposition or otherwise is previous.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and more important, now you may have heard in recently in in the news, uh, scholastic aptitude testing. Is now changing to adjust accommodations for life experience and things that aren't represented in tests that higher privileged white kids have access to. Quite candid. Okay, and poorer kids from hardship areas are given consideration for their experiences so that they can be equally viable as candidates for admission to college. My point being is they look beyond the an application and I appreciate your your point that there has to be an application, there has to be a bottom line, there has to be a threshold. But but at the same time. Um, had you spoke and you have, I had occasion to visit with Ms. Barron, or she came in to visit with me, actually. For more thirty years. She has heavily invested herself in this community, listen. And and she's probably gonna pull this off because she's resourceful and she'll get her own money without the benefit of the Tourism Board, because that's just how Linda rolls. And I think that like adjustments made to S A T scores, there had to be adjustments made for persons who was limited resources for thirty years, has stuck it out. Not only in the Santa Fe Trail Days, every military parade, she's front and center.
I totally agree.
Every leg.
That's.
I I was so.
Point I'm trying to make is what little I saw of listening to that second meeting as best as I could hear it. There was not, in my opinion, appropriate consideration given for the local person who has been working in the trenches to make it out.
But Anthony, we had several people that were local that if we make that cross that line, we would have had to cross that line.
Was there that same reputation that the applicant brought? If you with a clear, if you with a clear conscience can tell me that all applicants were equal, equal, with the same reputation of thirty years of historic service. Then I agree with you, nobody gets to think.
So what you're telling us is that. No matter what, if this, if the Chamber doesn't have their paperwork like the rest of the people, we overlook that. And we give them the money and we do not give the re- the money to the rest, let me finish.
Please.
Then I feel that I shouldn't serve on this board because I think if you're gonna be fair, you'd be fair with everybody. If you don't have your paperwork, you cannot move on with the process. This grant form was developed by, I don't know who, we're trying to revise it because we have gone through so many things.
You think the original grant form?
No, it's been updated a few times.
It's been, I got.
But again, the major problem is everybody didn't read it, there wasn't a checklist on the on the front of it and people, we, I. We were at fault in the Tourism Board over the years that when people would bring us a thing and it wasn't totally filled out, but it was only a few grants and we could fund them, we did. It was a little different this year with a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of grants and just the first time we did a thing this way, you know, we don't even know what the rest of the year's gonna look like.
We're we're trying to develop things now for future boards.
I mean, I really feel that.
A plan and a process.
I really believe that you do need, if you've got a process, you do need to follow that process.
Right.
You know, and if if paperwork is required and going forward, we have that discussion before it gets to you that. If it comes to Marty and she sees that, see, there's a document missing, she needs to let that.
It should never come to the board for a vote.
And and I think that, you know, they.
That's the way.
We really cannot overlook one and not overlook another one. So I think that it puts you guys in a very bad position and that's my concern.
And I'll I'll tell you what the way I felt that day, I could not vote for the Chamber and not be fair to the other ones. The thing that disturbed me the most about the process was. The Chamber's financials were brought to us that morning.
No, that was the second meeting.
It was two weeks later.
No, on the second meeting, they were brought to us that morning. Who were they, you know, where 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 did they come from, where were they, why weren't they with their packet? Those are the disturbing things for me.
Understood.
So if you feel that I could do that, I can't serve on this board.
There needs to be a process and I have stood your ground many times. But at the same time, it has to be a workable process, if this is a new application. And I realize everyone has the the responsibility to read it and make sure that it's accurate and complete, okay? But it seems to me that if there is a mechanism in place so that they can be assisted with defective and deficient applications.
We're working on that right now.
They would be given the time to rectify that and make it in, so that it rises to the level that you, it serves a need for your decision-making processes.
And I I think, yeah, I think it was painful.
But at the same time, I hope you appreciate the position or the point I'm trying to make.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying.
That there has to be certain consideration given. Good all by virtue of the the time you used to.
And prior to Tommy's being on the board, me and Cy were there with a couple of other people and there were only maybe four for the whole year requesting money.
One of the things, one of the things that I saw, uh, with the old documentation, it did show in there the documents that were needed. So those documents are listed, the only problem that I saw is that they were at the bottom of the page, a pretty much small, not small letter. They can get hidden, hidden, so my recommendation is that they put it on an individual sheet so that they can check off those items as they go through, as it.
Here's some of the, here's some of the previous grants that I kind of crossed, here's a two thousand three grant. And it's set up for two thousand seventeen, has two thousand three. So and in it, it has where some of the money's gonna be used for advertising and then they're gonna hire someone to do the advertising for them. So, you know, there's a history and what I feel like, my process on this board as I'm here is. I wanna move forward, I want to help the boards of the future, that when they come across these, everything is in line for them to follow. Whether how we grade them, how we, how how they're not coming to us before for a vote. And and that's that's the process that I wanna see with this.
I have a question.
Wait, Karen's been trying to go ahead.
Yeah, I have, I'm sorry. But I don't understand, so I'm doing the math here, you've encumbered thirty-four thousand five hundred, yeah, fifty thousand already. For, uh, the grant applications that you have, that means you have fifteen five of the fifty thousand left over. If you're encumbering the tourism tax for twenty-five thousand dollars over a year, why can't you encumber the tourism tax for the two thousand dollars for the, which is a lot less money? Why can't you encumber that money for something, an event that's happening before the Blues Fest? I don't understand that.
No, it was ten thousand dollars and and again, I mean.
No, you said twenty-five thousand for the Blues Fest.
Oh, I I meant the Chamber, the Chamber asked for ten.
But you were gonna give them two.
I was trying to give them two.
This was after, this was after the process.
Because, okay, yeah.
This was after, uh, Mrs. Barron had talked to Anthony, she wanted to bring it to a vote for the second time to give him two thousand dollars to help them out.
And and and.
Mrs. Barron told me that she had the financials, I asked her.
We didn't have the financials, she may have had the financials, but we didn't have the financials.
And she asked Marty and Marty had them as well.
No. Marty told us, she told us that she didn't have her her package, Freddie, um.
We didn't, we didn't get the financials until the second meeting.
Marty, you didn't have.
This is not to put you on the defensive, it's what's happened, it's happened, but inasmuch as this is a work session.
Right.
Hopefully what we can do is work out that.
Yeah, no.
In my opinion, there needs to be consideration, for a while we were giving consideration, higher bids for local merchants as compared to shopping shopping out of town. You understand my point? Okay, beyond that, you you mentioned several times, Tom, about the the application, maybe that application needs to be thrown away and you all need to write one.
We are.
That serves your purposes and and it has as part of it, a very specific, uh, instructions as to how to complete it and what is absolutely necessary.
We're all adults, I mean, I I read it, I could fill it out.
Yeah.
I think if you're running an organization, I think you should be able to fill that out.
And and let's go over, this is the requirements, okay?
Let let Mr. McTenny, I mean, Mr. Uh.
I I I sat on the Chamber, I guess you'd call it a leave on for a couple of years there and. And I saw all the hard work that went into the Santa Fe Trail, it took a lot of hard work, you know, not only Mrs. Barron, but all of us who sat there and.
I was the Chamber President before and I did the, so I know exactly how.
It seemed like, you know, it seemed like we're in a catch twenty-two situation here. You know. I could see their point and not having the paperwork being filled out. But yet I could see Mr. McTey's point for this being a a an event that 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 helps Trinidad.
And I was with, exactly with both of you the same way, that's exactly the way I felt.
It's a hard decision that has to be made, just like this council, every week we have a hard decision that we have to be made, but it's gotta be made. And the board and the board made that decision because the paperwork wasn't correct. Or it wasn't filed at the time, but to see, you know, something like Santa Fe Trail not funded because, you know, I I think this is a great event.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great event.
For our kids and stuff like that.
You might as well realize that we are not funding Santa Fe Trail, we are funding their advertising and that is, that is the key right there. We are here for funding advertising.
And it's been a little late in the year for advertising, there's something that happened in two weeks.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean personally, I know I I know I have now done sponsorship for the, uh, for, uh, the Santa Fe Trail Festival.
That's not me.
No, 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 I wanna face, that's basically, that's basically what it is. And so I know I did, I know, um, Phil Long said that they're giving us a sponsorship also because of it, I, Jim Schultz and her business is now doing sponsorship. So we are coming together as a community and trying to help the Santa Fe Trail Festival and Linda Barron and it broke my heart that we did not fund this, but it was just the way.
Let's do this, let's kind of now regurgitate what should happen, I wish he has a bit of a question and then.
So, out of the monies that were given to the seven recipients, is there a balance left over that could be available to the total of seventeen?
Twenty-five thousand. Can I for you?
Karen's right, she called out that figure, but we were actually looking because of the amount of people that are working hard to bring festivals to this area.
I understand that, hang on, let me just ask my questions.
No, I have one more, take about that amount, this is getting to that amount, so because that we only had that much left, we are really looking at light items that were designed by that, um, budget for this year. If we could move any of them, because we really wanna help fund some other things throughout the year with that many people, that many feet under us, that really wants to help it, so that is the correct amount. But don't be surprised if for some reason we've let go these, um, uh, these road signs and other things that we have some extra money that we're gonna come forward to the table to add to that amount for the year.
Okay, so so there is a little bit of money left over in the balance?
Yeah.
We're gonna run two more grant rounds.
Okay, so.
Is what we're gonna do.
This is just in the spirit of compromise, being that this is the first year that this new application process, because the culture in the past, what, let me finish before you interject. The culture in the past was that you didn't have enough applicants, so you had to go back to them to get them to, kinda had to.
Finish off the table and sort of do a question.
Finish off the paperwork, hey, we need your help so we can help you. And I get that. But now you have this new stringent line streamlined, which I'm I'm all in favor of, but it's it's kind of a new culture that is coming about and people may have been. Helped along the way before and now, well, it's more of a court kind of decision-making process, which is to be more efficient on your end. And to eliminate a lot of other issues because you can say clearly, you did not do this correctly, we're not gonna be applicable. Is there any wiggle room in your board to say, hey, this is the first year, we'll give a little leeway, but next year? No, because you have some issues, there wasn't clear instructions delineating what all the documents that were needed.
Oh, but there is in the grant application, there is.
It's just not on the front page.
It's just not on the front page, but if you read the whole thing, everything is there, everything is there. Please show them an old grant form.
I will, that was another question I had, in the grant form that looked at, looked like there was two, is there an older one and the newer one in there?
No, it just the typing, there was a few typographical, but I'd like to add on this, while we're still talking about this, this was the scoring sheet, I wanna tell you how they were scored. They were scored zero through four based on meeting compliance or not. Um, this event will have a positive impact and outcome for the community. This event will make our community more attractive to the tourism sector for return visits. This event provides economic opportunities for Trinidad businesses. This event represents a good platform for further development as a tourism destination event. Co-financing by additional sponsors or granters is e- is evident, so if somebody had a whole, a whole bunch of, uh, people that were also, um, partners with them, they would get a four. If they wanted us to pay for their whole event, they might get a one or a two, right, because we're looking for partnerships. The event was proposed by an organization or individuals that had established history and successful accomplishments of four. The event or some portion of the event occurs within the city limits of Trinidad. The event is a repeat event that has had been success in past years. This proposal means funding criteria of being utilized for marketing and advertising and a written media plan is included, so. A lot of those didn't have written media plans. So, a lot of those didn't have written media plans. The advertising media plan is physically located outside of fifty mile radius of Trinidad. And everybody got this form for filling out their application. The application includes a financial summary, either historic or proposed. The proposal shows that sustainability efforts are starting to go in place. And then they were all scored based on that. So, they had their grant, then they had the grant application scoring sheet to know how to fill out the grant, what they would, what they would be on.
Let's go ahead and get some final comments and take a little break here before a regular meeting starts.
Okay. I guess final comment, for me, I think everybody learned something by this grant process, including everybody in the city that applied for grants that we unfortunately weren't able to fund. I think that the grant process will be more fluid from now on, knowing that those applications won't be coming to the Tourism Board unless they're complete. And that we're serious about it being complete. I, 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 I'm sorry for any, all the undue rest and all the dividing of teams over this grant. It, it's really painful for me. Because I think as a community, we're all working to make this community better. It also felt really good that we had a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of people wanting to run under our board and go and speak out the Trinidad name all over. And that felt really good and it really shows you where our community is going. There's people that are coming up with events and having great ideas. Now, all we need to do is get more heads and backs and have more money so we could have more money to spend.
My thing is, is like I have expressed to Phil, that all of our board meetings are open. We're always open to any input from any project that we're doing to move in the whole tourism thing forward. There's a lot of things that we've changed in the last year and a half. You know, if you're interested in seeing any of them, we're more than happy to show you everything that we, we are doing to, to make it work for everybody. There's, there's more people staying in the motels, the, the grant money's growing. We have almost twenty-nine thousand dollars over the past years in that. And I would like to, you know, have a reserve at a hundred thousand and bring that twenty-nine over to help more organizations. There's, there's just so much going on, the advertising, that's going on in the magazines, the. We wanna promote Trinidad and we wanna help everybody that's in the city. We wanna help all these organizations. We, but we, but we have a process and, and that process was set down by this ordinance. And that's what we wanna follow and, and it's, we're all adults, we could fill it out and that's what I'd say.
I wanna be real quick. First of all, I am just hired up Chamber Two. I have, last year, me and Tommy went to Vail, Colorado, and we sat by ourselves on a table. And there was other people there. We are well represented by Colorado Tourism, and it's too shy, and it was terror. They all knew about us. Me and Tommy were sitting by ourselves at the table. In the next table, there were all these communities with their Tourism Board, Chamber Commerce Board, maybe a mayor, maybe a city council, and we are by ourselves. We need to start working, yes, I know you have a number to speak for this. We need to start working with our Chamber of Commerce as a whole. And we gotta start working with all of our organizations because there were Main Street group people sitting all together. And me and Tommy were the lone wolves of the Tourism Board. And everybody was well represented.
It's the state of Colorado Tourism. And so, there was a lot of economic development for it.
A lot of economic development.
We had tons of economic.
So, is that up and coming again this summer?
Yeah, it's, no, it'll be in November.
So, when you hear that, please let us know when that happens.
It's in Denver this year.
So that we can find, yeah.
But we were alone, and I would love to work with the, the Chamber of Commerce because they were a force, the Tourism Board and Chamber of Commerce and these smaller communities were my force together. And that's what we need to do.
And I have to tell you, the Governor Hickenlooper himself, through Trinidad, many morsels throughout that state and a couple of different speeches that he, he gave, all about space to create and the movers and shakers that were going on in Trinidad. And people were screaming in the crowds. He really, he really talked of Trinidad greatly and I, it was really nice.
Okay, let's go ahead and wind this up and we'll take a break here and.
And thank you guys for all that you do. I know it's very difficult conversations we have, especially like times like this. We, we are a community. I do believe in our community. I do believe in Linda Barron and the Chamber and we're just gonna move forward.
She has one question. Let me find out. Go ahead. Yeah, this is on a different subject. And at one point, you and I had talked about trying to get the counties to participate by passing a tourism tax.
Yeah.
And why should they be on the board if they're not contributing to the revenues but voting on the expanded tourism?
Right.
I had talked to council about a possible charter amendment if we don't pass a tourism tax. I want you to think about it. We don't have a lot of time, but if you think that that should be pursued.
Absolutely.
And your board thinks it should be pursued, please contact me or any other council.
I'm telling you right now, there is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in taxes sitting in our county with Airbnb's, with Monument Way, with all the rentals up there. When you think of one hotel of my size bringing in sixty to eighty thousand dollars a year and you turn around and you think of all those up there, there's, there's that much sitting on the table out there for us.
Okay, let's go ahead and, thanks. And yes, we'll come back to a regular meeting, give us six minutes to.